Parks and Recreation. We're here for a really important conversation about street trees. We're a city that loves its trees. We've one of the very few cities in the country that's actually made some progress over the last 20 years in the extent of its urban forest. But there's some pretty interesting policy questions to talk about. And you've asked for this work session back in May, and so we'll talk about that a little bit, a little bit later. So we're here to discuss how to manage and maintain our tree infrastructure. And it's clear that our urban forest and the design of our streets are really important factors in our city's resiliency. So thank you for bringing this forward. And there's two main topics that we're going to be talking about today. The first is, how should we design our streets so that we can achieve multiple objectives, such as trees? And two, who should have the responsibility for maintenance of street trees in the city? I'm going to serve as the sort of the emcee today, or at least try to choreograph this a little bit. We have between now and 11:30. We've got a number of important presentations from both the City Forester, from other bureaus, from our collaborators at P-BOT, Chris Warner here, from our City Forester Jen Cairo, and also from the Urban Forestry Commission. So with that, I just want to kick this work session off. First of all, there has been a tremendous amount of work since May with an inter-bureau team. And so they put a lot of time and thought and energy into this time today. I also want to thank a couple of key urban forestry commissioners. Merrill Reddish, who's the Policy Committee Chair, and also volunteer Roberta Jortner, who you know well, who led the particular work to get us to this point today. This preparation for this work session has, as I mentioned, has been very collaborative and involves multiple bureaus. We have an inter-bureau team. So from P-BOT, in addition to Chris, we have Christine Leon, Suzanne Kahn, Kurt Krueger, and Caitlin Ref. From BDS, Kimberly Talent. From Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, Sally Edmonds. And from Bureau of Environmental Services, Mike Jordan and Rochelle Altman. From Water, we also have Gabe Solmer. And Office of Management and Finance, Jamie Walls. And again, from Urban Forestry, our forester Jen Cairo, Brian Lando, and Angie DeSalvo. Okay, so, just looking to see if the PowerPoint is up. I'm on slide number two.
We'll have that in our hand.
Why that, why that work, why this work session? So remember that, these are the things we're going to cover today. Why are we meeting? What our goals are specifically for today? Talk about our current arrangement with street trees, some of their responsibilities and the challenges that we face. The Bureau of Transportation is going to make a presentation on the challenges they face as they look at designing the right-of-way. Urban Forestry is going to talk about this second issue, which is the options for maintenance of street trees in the city. The Urban Forestry Commission will come and have some recommendations. And then we're going to have well over an hour for interaction and discussion. And obviously, if you have questions as we move through, please don't hesitate to ask. Okay, so I'm on slide three. In May, we brought a couple of things to counsel. One was kind of a recognition of a great amount of work that had taken place over the last several years to do an inventory of our street trees. We talked about the volunteers that had participated. And now we have a good inventory of all the trees that exist in the right-of-way. That information...
All right, Mike, yeah, let's just find out how good an inventory. Corner of Cesar Chavez and Knott, southeast corner, what's the tree?
You know, I'll have to get back to that on that, Commissioner. I have everyone except for that one memorized.
As I suspected. The new homeowner's already chopped it down, sorry.
But thanks to over 1,300 volunteers, we do have that inventory for the first time. We have identified 218,602 street trees. We exaggerate that greatly, up to 220,000 when we talk about it, across 95 neighborhoods. And we've identified trends, some opportunities, and key challenges that are facing our street tree infrastructure. So one thing through this volunteer program we learned is that Portlanders love their trees. And it's not hard to get volunteers to come out for a worthy cause. And this is one of the most worthy, I think, from our citizens' perspective. So in May, you asked, or the Urban Forestry Commission actually asked council to establish a street tree task force to consider and propose specifics on two changes in street tree management. They asked that street trees be given a higher priority in street design and development than they currently have. They addressed the perception that we're losing a lot of good trees and that good space for tree planting is not adequate. And they've also asked in May to consider shifting maintenance responsibility for street trees from the adjacent property owner to the city. And that is the big policy question to discuss today. Also, as you know, the code can be a little bit unclear on street tree responsibility. And there have been cases just in the past year where, though the street trees are actually the responsibility of the adjacent property owners, it's not always on the front of the property. So it's not always clear that trees that are adjacent in a right-of-way are the responsibility of that property owner. That issue arose this year during Recap Eight, and therefore clarifying the city code in Title XI was removed because it's a fairly large question. And so that's one of the questions, that's one of the reasons that prompted us coming to you today. So I mentioned those two questions. And in the first question about how street trees are included as infrastructure priority in the right-of-way, P-BOT is currently embarking on a project to define management of the right-of-way infrastructure, including trees. And we'll discuss that project so as to get council input on how you'd like it to address street trees. And then does council want to change the responsibility for management of street trees from adjacent property owners to the city? And that's primarily, well, it's a financial question as well as a functional question.
Mike, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When we talk about maintenance of street trees, and I'm thinking back on my 20 years as a homeowner in Grant Park, I view my responsibility in two respects. First was the health of the tree in the right-of-way. And just my luck, I had a couple of trees that were rotting on the inside, so I had a responsibility for dealing with that. And the second was the impact of the tree roots on sidewalks and adjacent property. And that had two, that had two impacts. One is it screwed up my sewer system. And some of the roots got into my sewer system, which required a replacement of a pipe. And second, obviously, was damage to the sidewalk. And one of my neighbors got dinged by an inspector, so the entire neighborhood got dinged, and we replaced most of the sidewalk. So am I right in thinking about it in terms of both of those, are those both what you consider to be maintenance? Or are we talking strictly about the care of a tree in the right-of-way?
Commissioner, that's a good question. I think one thing I'd say, first of all, is you realize that you have that responsibility. And that is a point of some confusion for many property owners who don't know, first of all, that those street trees, though they're in the right-of-way, are their responsibility. But you're right. The impact of street trees, whether it be the roots lifting a sidewalk or interference with infrastructure, those...
I'm connecting sewer pipe.
Connecting, that was your lateral line going to your property, I'm guessing.
Roots got right in there.
Right, right. And that is, those are still the homeowner's responsibility. So there are some best practices about how do you resolve some of those issues? How do you prevent...
But at least for purposes of today, we're not talking about that. We're talking about just the maintaining healthy trees in the right-of-way?
No, Commissioner, I'd say we are talking about that. So the question right now, the main policy question on the table to discuss is, since that is our current state, that the property owner has all of those maintenance responsibilities for the tree? Or if it comes down, or if it needs to be removed, that's all the responsibility of that process. Is that the proper way to do it? There are other ways of assigning and assessing responsibility. And other places that we'll talk about a little bit today are cities that take on that responsibility themselves. So they do, for example, proactive maintenance on street trees to make sure that they don't fail. We don't do that right now. It's the responsibility of the property owner. And many property owners, like yourself, would be on top of that and doing maintenance. But others may not know, or may know but not have the means to do that maintenance. So that is the second, that is the key policy question we're talking about. Should that continue? Does the council want us to consider some other options beyond our current structure right now? So with that, as just an introduction, I'm going to turn it over to our City Forester Jen Cairo to talk a little bit about our current situation.
Great, thank you, Mike, and thank you, Commissioners. Good morning, and everyone else. So first, I just wanted to remind us all what street trees are as opposed to other trees in the city. We're talking specifically today about trees that are in the right-of-way. They're often between the curb and the sidewalk in a planting strip, or a tree well, or a cutout. Or they might be in an unimproved or under-improved right-of-way that doesn't have curbs, sidewalks, or both. Or they could also be behind the sidewalk but still in right-of-way on public property. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the services that trees provide us, including street trees in the city. They provide many services to urban residents, and I'll address only some of them today for the sake of time. And we know about these services from decades of competent research. Understanding and appreciation of tree services in cities has increased over time, and we now recognize that these are critical infrastructure in a city. A city without trees is losing out on services to its residents. So some of the things that street trees give us is public health benefits. They create cleaner air and therefore improve respiratory health. They also reduce recovery time from illnesses and improve psychological health in residents. Trees buffer pedestrians and property from traffic and reduce traffic speeds. They take up precipitation, whether rain, snow, or ice, on-site, therefore keeping it out of the stormwater system and lowering our stormwater management costs, as I'm sure Commissioner Fish knows very well. They can increase property sale values by up to 15%. And they mitigate climate change by reducing certain greenhouse gases. And tree shade lowers local temperatures significantly, reducing urban heat island effect in developed and hardscaped areas, which is also an important part of our climate challenges these days. Trees also create walkable, inviting, beautiful, and communal neighborhoods. And in Portland, street trees are an essential part of our city's environment and appeal to our residents. So as of April of this year, part of our street tree inventory assessed the value of all those services that street trees provide us. And they provide at least $28.6 million worth of services to our residents every year. And the replacement value for those trees, if we lost them and had to put them back, is $753 million. So we're talking about a really significant infrastructure asset in the city. Carla, no luck on the PowerPoint?
It's still working.
Okay. Well, in your packet, you have a photo, sorry, crowd, that you can't see this, of Street and Mads Edition. And that's a neighborhood that's fortunate to have good street trees. And therefore, those residents really benefit in all the ways I just mentioned from their street tree infrastructure. Responsibility for street trees in Portland can be divided into tree management and tree maintenance. The Urban Forestry Division of Parks and Recreation is responsible for managing the city's tree assets, including all aspects of street trees. For example, Urban Forestry creates and implements standards and best management practices, such as appropriate species for planting, and the manner of planting, and maintenance practices. We also do planning for our street trees, such as the street tree inventory, which you know a lot about now, and the city's urban forest management plan. We promote and support the adjacent property owner responsibility for street tree maintenance and public tree stewardship. We actually invest quite a bit of resources and effort into these outreach and education and stewardship programs. There are about 50 of those distinct separate programs across the city each winter, usually mostly in the winter. And those include things like how to properly prune your street tree, how to plant trees, heritage tree walks, species selection, and other information that can help a property owner do tree management well, or maintenance well. We also partner in the community tree program for young street tree pruning that's operated by Friends of Trees and funded by BES. And Urban Forestry is also responsible for all the regulations and permitting involving street trees, whether in development situations or just for removals when a tree is no longer healthy and needs to be replaced. Finally, Urban Forestry responds to all emergencies involving street trees failing or falling in the road 24/7, in all weather. However, this is where the roads diverge. The maintenance responsibility, so day-to-day care of trees and streets, is the responsibility of the adjacent property owner in Portland. So while we and our colleagues in other bureaus help manage the street tree infrastructure, the actual practices of pruning, planting, monitoring trees to see when they need work, and addressing possible hazards falls to the property owner next to the tree. This type of work also is very technical often, and it can be difficult for people to know what they need to do and to actually perform the activities that are needed by themselves. So it often involves professional arborists, ideally. Council may recall that last spring, the Almsbudsman's Office investigated a complaint about this adjacent property owner maintenance responsibility. And we learned from that, and we already kind of knew this, that the responsibility for a street tree maintenance isn't clear to a lot of residents in Portland. It's unknown, as Mike mentioned earlier, to a lot of the residents. And we also know that some property owners oppose the fact that they are supposed to be maintaining their street trees. Therefore, we weren't able to clarify in the Recap Eight process the tree code in that regard. So it remains unclear to some, and an issue for others, that the adjacent property owner has to maintain their street trees. Finally, adjacent property owner maintenance of street trees is an exception to urban forestry programs nationwide. Most often, the city maintains the street tree. So in our area, some other local municipalities do what Portland does, and they leave that obligation with the property owner adjacent. For example, Lake Oswego, Tualatin, and Gresham have the same practices Portland. However, Los Angeles, San Diego, Vancouver, Washington, Vancouver, British Columbia, Salem, Oregon, Eugene, Oregon, San Francisco, New York City, Chicago, and the District of Columbia, and many others, the city is responsible for street tree maintenance as well as management in those cities. I want to speak a little bit about competition for space in right-of-way in regards to trees. Street trees currently, under our present system, are often removed in street improvement or development situations when perhaps they wouldn't have to be if they were, we were using more progressive and clear tree-oriented standard designs and requirements. Indeed, the trees that we sometimes lose when streets are improved are significant contributors to services in a neighborhood, and it's very difficult to replace once the tree is gone. Even if a new tree can be planted, it is often many, many years before that tree will be able to provide services like the one lost. And the tree might not make it, so we might never replace the services. Also, areas with large amounts of or under-improved right-of-way are at high risk of tree loss. In the photograph that you see there, the Powellhurst Gilbert photo to the left, that's a large fir tree that's in unimproved right-of-way. And if and when that street does get improved and curbs and sidewalks are added, there's a good chance that we will lose that tree, given the conventional practices. So that's also a concern especially... Thanks.
You're so close to it.
Okay, was I doing that the whole time?
Yeah.
Sorry. Sorry, everybody. Okay. Great. Right, so this is especially a concern in eastern Portland, where we have less canopy and more low income, and communities of color and immigrant communities who need the services that trees provide perhaps more than other parts of the city where there are more trees. Also, too often, streets at the sidewalk have no suitable space for tree planting. A tree needs a certain amount of room to be a tree, to survive there. And you can see that illustrated in the second photograph, Woodlawn Neighborhood, where the planting strip is very, very tiny between the curb and the sidewalk. So we could never put trees there. And you see, as you look down the street in that photograph, there are no trees there. So this neighborhood does not have street trees in that area. And then on the last photograph, we see an illustration of another concern, which is the conflict for other street infrastructure in the right-of-way. There are many services, many different facilities that we need to have in our streets. Trees are only one of those. And this inner east part of the city photograph shows where there's been a curb extension in order to accommodate a vault, a utility vault, but there's no tree involved there. And this is a very hardscaped area, so this would be a priority for tree placement if we could fit it in. So those are some of the design and street development challenges that we have currently with trees. Now I'm going to speak a little bit about why we need a reliable funding source for street tree maintenance, rather than having that responsibility rest with the property owner. First off, safety is a very, very big concern. A lack of street tree maintenance and improper treatment of trees by the property owners can create significant and many public safety hazards, resulting in emergency situations. The top photograph you can see there is an emergency situation that was in southwestern part of the city, where a street tree failed and clearly crushed a car. Fortunately, nobody was in that car. We have had instances where people have been hurt, and that is always a possibility, a very unfortunate possibility. In this case, private property and also the curb, the sidewalk, and potentially underground infrastructure were also damaged. So this is a significant cost. We also know that the great majority of the tree emergencies we see could have been prevented with proactive routine maintenance. And this is a case where, had this tree been inspected regularly by trained people and treated appropriately, it very well may not have failed like this. And we know that for a certainty. The second photograph on the bottom, we see that...
The irony of that particular tree is it's in front of a condominium. And so, you know, the condominium association spends a lot of time, that's my apartment building in the back, so I recognize the location.
Is it really?
Thank God that's not my...
It's not your car, I hope.
Thank God it's not my car. But there is a condo there that spends a lot of time maintaining the property, and it's very, very well-maintained, put a lot of effort. It's interesting that, I would call them a highly motivated property owner, and yet here we have a situation that was a disaster.
You know, that's a good point you raised, Commissioner Fish. What we found is that where it's a condominium or a rental situation, oftentimes the residents are interested in having street trees, but the building owner may not be. And so we see a lack of street trees around some of those buildings. It's very interesting. To continue with that lower photograph, this is illustrating that when trees fail and tree emergencies in the road, we have traffic issues. And our colleagues at P-BOT could tell you lots about that. This situation blocked that road for hours and took a lot of heavy equipment and people power to clear. So again, this is an emergency response rather than a planned, efficient, more cost-effective response.
I also have some personal experience with that. This winter, the street tree in front of my house came down. It had been dropping large limbs for years, and my landlord refused to deal with it. And when it took out the power line, it ripped the power box off the side of my house, it blocked 15th Avenue, which is a major thoroughfare in my neighborhood. And when I told her she should have taken it down sooner, she said there are rules against taking street trees down. And I said, "Well, I assure you, as the Commissioner in charge of the bureau that enforces on street trees, there's no rule against taking down unsafe, failing tree." And then she asked me to pull a permit to take the rest down. And I declined. So, just a little personal anecdote there, but I do think, you know, not only is there confusion about whose responsibility it is, there seems to be a lot of confusion about who can take a tree down, when they can take a tree down.
Right.
If they have to pull a permit.
Yeah.
How it has to be replaced, so...
It's a good opportunity to just mention 823 Tree.
Yes.
So that's a number that all Portlanders can call, and they can just talk, mention their address, we can look it up, and we can answer those questions. But like you said, in the case of a dead, dying, or dangerous tree, we will issue a permit. But there's a permit process, and we'll send somebody out there just to confirm that that's the case. I think it's really interesting in this discussion, we talk about trees as part of our infrastructure. But it is about the only part of our infrastructure that we don't touch until it fails. And then we pick up the pieces and try to go on. And just because of the structure like Jen is describing, with it being the adjacent property owner, it's really at the whim of who that property owner is, the maintenance of this important infrastructure item.
Maybe we could teach urban forestry in our schools, and then all the children could go home and tell their parents how to take care of their trees. That sounds excellent.
Okay, excellent. So, and to continue with what Mike was saying, Commissioner Udeli, so other cities would have been routinely, on some schedule, looking at the trees in front of your house, your property, and doing the work that needed to be done to prevent it ever becoming a hazard, a risk, or eventually failing. And the permit process would be moot, because that would already be taken care of. So different model. I also wanted to point out that emergency situations caused by a lack of maintenance create inherent and very significant risks for staff who are dealing with them. Trees that are hung up, fallen, damaged in some critical way are inherently risky, unpredictable, and our folks respond by themselves at night, in all weather, and wield chainsaws out in roadways to get those trees clear. So proactive tree maintenance would reduce the need for that risk to city staff. Affordability and equity, of course, are other issues that I'm guessing you can understand related to our policy model. It is a barrier for many property owners or residents to have a street tree because of the costs of maintenance. For example, a large tree that's in a very complex situation, maybe there's power lines or small space, there's traffic control needed, easily could cost $6,000 or $8,000. It's a wide range, depending on the situation of tree, at one time when that work needs to get done. And people just can't afford that, or won't afford that. And again, we've already talked about the fact that some people don't know that they have that responsibility. So in part, this is a barrier for people with fewer financial resources, and this is one of the reasons we think that we have fewer trees in the eastern part of the city, where we see lower incomes in residents more typically. It's also an example of a public policy fueling a systematic inequity in services to residents and an environmental justice issue. There are parts of town that get fewer tree services, at least in part because it's too expensive for them to do it. Yep, okay, and service delivery. There are two aspects to service delivery in terms of not maintaining trees. We know that unmaintained assets, this is just like a swimming pool or a road, don't perform as well as those that are maintained and don't last as long. This is precisely the same situation with trees. We could be getting a lot more out of our trees if we were proactively maintaining them. There's also quite an opportunity cost of not maintaining trees. With a high number of tree emergencies like we had last year, that means that our other work stops. So we have to stop issuing permits in order to get out there and address the tree emergencies. And it's also very costly. More than half of Urban Forestry Division's budget goes to tree emergency response rather than all of the other services, education, stewardship, training for residents, permit issuance, because of the nature of the work. And finally, the return on the investment that we're losing by not maintaining our street trees is quite significant. Urban Forestry has permitted the planting of more than 57,000 street trees since 2011. Many of those were required as part of, for example, development projects. And Bureau of Environmental Services has planted 40,000 trees, mostly in streets, over the past several years to reduce inputs and costs for our stormwater management system. There are also thousands, literally thousands, of volunteers and volunteer hours towards maintaining and planting street trees across the city. So those are really big investments, and without proactive maintenance, the return on that investment is much lower than it could and should be. And a final note regarding resiliency. The Pacific Northwest climate is traditionally great for trees. We don't know if this is going to be our future, but the trend over the last few years has been much hotter and drier summers, and harsher storms in winters, and it's taking its toll on our trees. So if those trees aren't maintained, and that pattern continues in the future, we will see much greater losses and lower services from our street trees. Now with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris to talk about P-BOT's project involving streets.
Great, thank you, Jen. Commissioners, thank you, and thank you to Urban Forestry for including P-BOT in this important discussion. I will be joined by Christine Leon, who's a P-BOT manager for... I will be joined by Christine Lyon, who's a P-BOT manager for permit development and transit. And she's basically works as a city's right-of-way manager. Christine and her staff, including Program Development Manager Caitlin Refe and Development Division Manager Kurt Kruger, are responsible for developing Portland's renewed approach to allocating and managing the city's right-of-way. And this effort will make- will include making decisions in the right-of-way allocation more transparent and better for all citizens of the city. After all, as we say at P-BOT, everything flows to the right-of-way, whether it's people, fluids, energy, vehicles, it all goes to the right-of-way. And it is large. It is approximately 15% of the city's total land area is the right-of-way. The goal is to support implementation of the COMP Plan 2035 and the TSP, the Transportation System Plan, for how the right-of-way serves the public good. I'm going to be presenting an overview of the current challenges of locating and allocating space within the right-of-way, the proposal for the project, the stakeholder engagement, strategy, and timeline. And this approach is in place of the Urban Forestry Commission's request for a task force on street tree prioritization. We've kind of merged the efforts so we can have one comprehensive look at the right-of-way. So go to page- or to slide 10. P-BOT is managing this project as part of our overall strategic work plan, which will define the problem and lay out the context, build consensus on the approach for right-of-way management allocation in order to streamline decisions, ensure stakeholders understand the issues and agree on the framework for a future which preserves features for the system overall, coordinate functional uses of the right-of-way, including the support for city trees, for the city's street canopy, the water system deliveries, sanitary, stormwater conveyance, transportation functions, economic, social, and environmental objectives. And we will also develop processes and tools that support the 2035 COMP Plan policies. And I'm going to do a quote from the COMP Plan, "For the multipurpose public right-of-way, a transportation system that is safe, complete, interconnected, multimodal, and fulfills the daily needs of people and businesses, and enhances the quality of life for Portlanders." So that's quite a lot that the right-of-way has to provide for all Portlanders. So today, I'll be sharing the intent of how we're going to initiate this program, how trees- oh, it's up now. -fit into the approach. And we will return with a more detailed plan in mid-2018, after the project is formally launched. So, the picture on slide 11. It's not up there anymore. Oh, there it goes. We know that some of the best streets in the world have great trees, and trees play a critical role in complete streets in our vision for Portland. While this is not Portland, this image is so striking, and wanted to show how a large tree canopy on a street in Tokyo, Japan adds value to the streetscape for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motor vehicles. Air quality and stormwater benefits are also significant. So, when people think of the right-of-way, they think of it as mostly a conveyance for cars, but it's actually much more than that. We know that trees are a huge part of it, but there's also many other things that, in the right-of-way, that we have to be cognizant of. So, whether it's trees, cafes, stormwater, artwork, people, lighting, public transit, utilities, emergency services, protected bike lanes, electric vehicle charging, Wi-Fi, parking, on and on. So, as you can see from the graphic, the right-of-way is very crowded. And so what we're trying to do is to bring some order and some prioritization to the right-of-way. So, the public street space in Portland must accommodate these many different functions. And one thing that's unique about Portland is our urban blocks are very small, and the right-of-way widths are quite small. And so, that's one of the real challenges in terms of trying to fit everything in there and to expand the available public street space in a significant way. So it's important for the city to use the existing streets efficiently and wisely. So, number 13 is the challenge which would be above. Multiple challenges exist at street level. As development continues and technology expands, it is highly unlikely that the picture you see there, Northeast Sandy Boulevard, will look like this 20 years from now. Well, first off, we'll probably have more trees at that point, but this right-of-way management project will help guide that transformation. While the city does have guidelines and regulations for each individual functions of the public thoroughfare, we need to take a holistic approach to designing and planning for diverse and changing needs. There are many factors at play, more than just pedestrians and trees. As we think about the future of our public street, trade-offs and risk will be factored in to allow for compromise and decision-making in the high-demand space. So the next slide, when we saw the challenges of above, and this is the challenges of below, we need for street space allocation are often buried in the details of what happens below the surface. A key function of the public right-of-way is supporting our underground utilities, including water, sanitary sewer, stormwater management, energy, and communications. This drawing is a typical- is P-BOT's typical utility cross-section that includes spacing requirements for underground utilities. Tree roots, large utility vaults, pole foundations, service laterals, and sumps and catch basins are also competing for space down below. How does P-BOT make decisions now? All that is built in the right-of-way is permitted by P-BOT. Each detail and request is evaluated and weighed. Yet, we will and need to find a better way of making decisions. It will involve a stronger partnership with other bureaus, utilities, and a streamlined decision-making. So to achieve our project goals, we are working closely with partner agencies and key stakeholder groups. This preliminary team- this preliminary team structure allows for appropriate levels of input, discussion, and decision-making, accountability, consultation, and information sharing. P-BOT is committed to an inclusive process. Besides the internal P-BOT management structure and project teams, we have an inter-agency technical advisory committee and individual stakeholder groups providing input and options. Utilities will be a key part of the technical advisory committee. The next slide, I wanted to share a quick example of where we have been challenged in the past. Currently, implementation guidance does not provide direction to staff on how to resolve competing needs in the right-of-way. In the scenario above, we are balancing tree and sidewalk conductivity with tree preservation. This is an example of a curb extension designed to preserve a tree. Part of our right-of-way management project will look at scenarios where unique solutions have been developed and explore if those are appropriate to be standardized throughout the city. What I'll do now is kind of outline the timeline for the project. It's a multi-year project that is starting now with scoping. We envision deliverables are launched as the work progresses. This project will use an active toolkit as opposed to a shelf manual that would sit there. We want to be able to have- for it to actually grow and change as we find out more information and we find best practices. P-BOT will launch a chartering session to ensure alignment on the project vision and goals across divisions. We will work closely with the Executive Steering Committee, Development Directors, and the Technical Advisory Committee to further develop the program, delivery team, establish existing conditions and consensus on the proposed approach. The end of next year, we are targeting for an agreement on the policy framework for right-of-way allocation and launch into street design tools for complete streets. We would like to do an in-depth report or work session to council, once we have the consultant team on board and the TAC established, probably sometime mid-next year. So, the right-of-way management project will provide an opportunity to talk about street trees. We are starting this project with open minds and understanding that all needs in the right-of-way are valid and important. We know that there are many new approaches and progressive way peer cities have been addressing the same issues, and we look forward to discovering the best solution for Portland together. The process we've outlined will help promote collaboration across bureaus and engage community stakeholders, and we're excited to get started. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Chris, I just have a couple of questions. Do you have some updated numbers on the annual cost, excuse me, of replacing sidewalks that folks who work for P-BOT have tagged? And I know that when you get a notice, you have two options. The city can do it, and there's at a, what I'll call, a premium, or you can hire a private contractor to do it. Do you have some data you could share with us over the last couple of years of both the number of just quantifying how much of the sidewalks have been tagged? And then, you know, how much of the work has been done by P-BOT, at what cost versus private contractors?
I don't have that number, but we can certainly get it for you. You know, it comes in ebbs and flows, I think. There was a- in northeast Portland, I think, where you lived, I think there was somebody that was going out and tagging a lot, and so where inspections were fairly focused, so. But I don't know the number, but I can try and find that out.
I'd be interested just to get my arms around, what's the cost of maintaining sidewalks? And in my old neighborhood, I think frankly, roots were the principal culprit.
Yeah.
And second, we've heard that in some other cities, Vancouver, San Francisco, and others, the city has taken on the responsibility for maintaining trees in the right-of-way. Are we going to be discussing, as part of the presentation, how they pay for that?
Yeah, we can talk about that, Commissioner. I think-
What tools do they use, and how do they allocate the cost? I think I'd be interested in knowing more about that.
And let me frame this, too. I mentioned there was two policy questions. The first is, how do we design the right-of-way to accomplish multiple objectives? That's, I think it was very fortuitous, we really appreciate P-BOT stepping up and saying, "Hey, we were going to do this project, this could be the vehicle to do a comprehensive look." And then the second question that Jen is about to jump into is maintenance options. And the policy question, I think at the end of the day for the council, is, would you like to establish a task force to look at this in great depth about alternative means of managing trees in the right-of-way, and come back with some funding scenarios and funding strategies? So. So with that, Jen, you want to jump into some of those options that are on the table?
Sure, I will. And if the PowerPoint's working, that would be helpful. There are three options I'm going to detail for you. These are options that the Interbureau Task Force came up with, with help from the Forestry Commission. And they are all options for how to do maintenance of street trees differently or the same as we do today. The first of those is the status quo. And that would mean, at this time, the adjacent property owners would remain responsible for street tree maintenance in all of its forms, and council may, at some future time, reconsider whether that should change or not. This means also that the question of what is clear in Title XI remains out there. Option two is creating, really, an expansion of the resident support and stewardship that we currently try to provide, so that adjacent property owners know about their responsibility and are able to do it effectively. So we've called this option two, the New Street Tree Education and Support Program. In this case, the adjacent property owner would maintain that responsibility for tree maintenance. However, we would be adding resources to promote and support the current policy system. That would include new and broader, much more robust outreach and messaging, so people would know that it's their responsibility. Also, a new fund for low-income property owner cost relief, so when they do have to do some sort of maintenance or even removal and planting, there is at least an opportunity for them to get financial support from the city. And expanding our tree inspection and permit capacity. At present, we have only so many staff, we have 10 tree inspectors for the whole city. We can't even get out there and give people the assistance they need or identify issues as quickly as we'd like to, so this would help with that as well. So the estimated cost for this second option would be $200,000 one time, and that's for working with a consultant on an outreach and marketing strategy and campaign that we would use going forward to communicate with property owners. And then, each year, $1.5 million, and that would be between staff resources that would need to be added to support the expanded programs, and also a large chunk of that would be set aside for the property owner tree maintenance support for low-income property owners to call upon. And we would have to develop policies for how that would happen. The third option, which is the Interbureau staff and the directors' recommended option, is option three. A street tree task force is created by council, and it investigates and creates proposals for city-funded maintenance of street trees that would come back to council for your consideration. This task force would involve the city bureaus, as well as resident members, including the Forestry Commission. It would last for about a year. And the deliverables that the group would create would include, first, a group charter, what are the rules of operation, what are the goals that are being sought? And then there would be at least three options for council consideration for the city, assuming some financial responsibility for street tree maintenance. It's kind of broad, aside from that. It would really be up to the task force to figure out what components of street tree maintenance would be covered, or could be considered by council to take on. Also, what extent? Street tree maintenance is usually done in a systematic cycle, so a tree is visited every so many years routinely, just like you would do in inspecting a bridge, for example. How long that time span is between visits has a lot of effect on the cost. So those are the sorts of elements that this group could look at, and they would be looking at what other cities have done, and discussing among themselves, and bringing back to council what their ideas are. The cost for this would be $70,000 one time, and that is a reduced cost. When we started out, it was double that, but we've been fortunate to have Jamie Walts from OMF offer to serve as the facilitator for the group, so that cost went away. She can absorb that in her work plan. Thank you so much, Jamie. That cost would just be for a subject matter expert consultant to update a 2009 report that the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability had done, that went through all of the process that I just described. It looked at what other cities do, it looked at what elements of street tree maintenance Portland might want to take on, given what other cities do and what Portland needs. It looked at costs and ranges of costs, and it also identified possible funding sources for the new resources the city would need to identify. I think it's important to stress there that the city membership would, at base, would be Bureau of Transportation, because of course, there are right-of-way managers, Parks and Forestry, Bureau of Environmental Services, because of the amount of resources they've invested in street trees and their interest in stormwater management and right-of-way. And then there would be other players that would come in as needed. City Budget Office would need to be involved, the City Attorney's Office, Water Bureau would need to be involved, Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, and the Bureau of Development Services as well, among others. And from the residents, it would be our forestry commissioners, as well, some of those, perhaps two representatives, as well as some community groups that are active and interested in street trees in the city. So again, that's the recommended option for council.
So with that, should I introduce, we have three members of the Urban Forestry Commission, Mark Bello, Jim Labby, and Tui Tu, who are going to share with you the Urban Forestry Commission's recommendations.
We have a question. How many sidewalks are posted due to some issue with either upheaval or cracks? We get about 1,000 permits issued for posting issues, and about 1,500 for voluntary repairs. Not all of those are due to street tree issues, but just gives you a kind of a framework for how many people are coming in, trying to do some repairs on their sidewalk.
Thank you.
It's definitely another complicating factor with affordability and equity. In my neighborhood, we have a lot of older residents who are being compelled to repair their sidewalks for thousands of dollars, and then told they need to replace the tree that caused the damage. And they're not willing to do that necessarily, so.
My name is Mark Bello, I'm currently Chair of the Urban Forestry Commission. I'm currently Chair with the Urban Forestry Commission, with me is Jim Labby and Tui Tu. Jim was on the Oversight Advisory Committee, Overview Advisory Committee, and Tui is a member of the Forestry Commission. The Forestry Commission is composed of 11 volunteers appointed by the city. We help to advance the public conversation regarding trees. Our membership includes a diverse group of residents, including professional arborists. To expand our communication and representation of the public even further, we have a large number of committees, including the Policy Committee, which meets informally and has been working hard on this issue for a couple of years. On May 10th, we came and made the case to you that Portland's street trees are a valuable asset, and that we can't neglect them, and that we requested this work session, so we thank you. There are three really simple observations, or basic observations, we've made. One is, we're losing a lot of trees in Portland. Trees are important. We're losing especially an opportunity to plant mature trees. There's a lack of space for new trees, new street trees, and there's also issues with forest- finding space for new street trees when we require them, also through development projects. We recommend that you establish an Interbureau Task Force to work with community partners, as you heard today. And most importantly, we want to thank you for taking the time and effort and allowing your staff and the bureaus to work on this issue to this date. I'll turn it over to Jim now.
Hi, thank you for taking the time today to, to think deeply about this issue. What you heard from staff was their proposal that was originally a response to the proposal that Urban Forestry Commission made to address street tree issues, these two components of the street tree issues. And I'm here to say that we are strongly in support of option three that the staff presented to address the street tree maintenance, I'd like to say maintenance stewardship issue for all the reasons that they described. We are supportive and encouraged by the, the right-of-way toolkit, the strategy to respond to the other half, which is really dealing with how trees are impacted by development improvements, public right-of-way. We submitted comments to PBOT, and they responded. I think our conditional support is that we, it really is going to depend on robust community involvement in scoping the issues. You know, the issues around development improvement in the public right-of-way vary across the city, based on, on really the urban forum. You have different issues downtown, different issues in East Portland, where you have a lot of under, underdeveloped or undeveloped right-of-ways. So it's going to take a lot of customization of solutions in different parts of the city, and I think that will begin with getting all those ideas and concerns plugged in at the front end. The other issue we're concerned a little bit about with the toolkit is, is it going to be a guidance document, or are there going to be real specific implementation tools that are sufficient? And that, that is, there's going to be clear next steps coming out of it in terms of looking at code or policy or procedural changes, too. I think a lot of the issues around is kind of who decides and where the burden of proof is. And so, those are our concerns about our, with our provisional support for kind of the toolkit as a strategy for addressing those issues. Some of the key things is around, you know, having bureaus there. I really appreciate the bureaus coming, and they've worked hard the last few months to come together. Strong facilitation, I think, sounds like we have that in the, the street tree maintenance stewardship piece. It's still being defined exactly how that's going to work with the toolkit, I think that would be important. Strong analysis, as I said, for implementation mechanisms and sustainable funding options. So, those are some of the, the kind of key imperatives we see going forward in, in terms of supporting those options of the staff. I wanted to kind of just back up maybe a little, and then let Tui talk too, about kind of the significance why now. And, and I wanted to first point out that there's a number of people in the room today. I'm actually also wearing my, as the interim executive director of DPave, I'm wearing DPave's hat today. We have, Friends of Trees sent a letter in on this. There's a lot of community interest in, in this project, these projects. We've had a lot of conversation with the community over the last six months. Noelle Stewart-Bibak is here, Eli wanted to come and talk, and both Eli and her wanted to come and talk about the barriers for developers who want to do the right thing. That's, that interest and voices out there. Barb Morton sent a letter, who's a street steward, and, and others. So a lot of community interest. And I think this really flows broadly from two, two things. This project is really the disparities we saw in the street tree inventory, we see stocking levels much lower in parts of the city than others, and in neighborhoods with a lot of vulnerable populations, so there's a fundamental equity issue here. And the comp plan and the climate action plan in terms of really establishing a new role for trees and urban green infrastructure in the city of the future, both for their public health benefits, and particularly addressing some of the, the challenges with growth and change in our city. And, and street trees are strategic in both those respects, in terms of, of making people feel more comfortable with the changes that are happening in their neighborhoods, but also being, they're really the frontline safeguard of our public health in the city. Probably the most important green infrastructure for that. The other aspect of the equity that I just want to touch before I pass on to Tui is, is the opportunity to build off of some of the programs that Veride has been doing to plant established street trees. I think, you know, with investment in maintenance and stewardship, if we eventually get there, it's an opportunity to really expand on those programs. And part of the equity issue is not just the outcomes, but the process of making these improvements. And as Alan Hippolito often likes to point out, that, you know, sharing more broadly the opportunities to improve our community, to steward our community is, is, is important for creating a strong, sustaining that stewardship in our community, our culture of stewardship that's, that I think is unique to Portland. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to Tui Tu. Tui is one of your Urban Forestry Commissioners, she's also Professor of Civil Engineering at PSU, and with especially in urban resilience. Thank you.
University of Portland.
Oh, I'm sorry, University of Portland.
There's a huge distinction there. Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity.
Oh, Mike is up. That bends down. It bends down. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I will speak both as an urban forestry representative, and also my affiliation with Opono in the Jade District, and the work that is taking place out there right now. Primarily also has a focus with trees, resilience, equity, and links to East Portland. As you know, there are some great efforts, boots on the ground with community work, primarily within the Jade right now, with greening of the Jade Project, which is an Oregon Solutions Project. It's a collaborative effort within the urban forestry. Parks and Recreation, Friends of Trees, and Bureau of Environmental Services, and also Opono. And that project has a commitment of planting at least 100 trees in the Jade District over the course of five years, and that's very much attainable, but I think it's a great pilot project that's taking place within 82nd and east of 82nd that we could look at as to, this is something that we can, as Oregonians, as Oregonians and as City of Portland, we could be proud of. The other initiative that's taking place in East Portland is the Citywide Street Tree Strategy, which is a community advisory committee that I have been a part of, but really to the extent of having community members out in East Portland, communities of colors and low-income minorities, being a part of the task force to build upon what it is that's really important to them, and how they can have a voice at the table, but also have a voice to, to help implement change for, for them. So it's a really great initiative that just completed just a few months ago, actually, no, I'm sorry, it was a five to six-month process, met once a month, and they just completed their community dialogues that identified opportunities and barriers. And those recommendations will be brought to you in the next year. But, I don't want to spoil or anything, but they've done some really great work out there, and I think it's something that they're very much proud of, and they want to bring it forth. So, those are two big things I want to bring up. The other piece is, how do we move forward with this? Within the Urban Forestry Commission, we formed a subcommittee called the Geographical Area of Focus, and that intent is to focus on greening projects underway in Portland. And in particular, I've been tracking the Jade Greening Project, and also with the hope at some point that we can move eastward, and also look at communities out in Division Midway, and also communities out in Rockwood areas, that also borders Gresham, just so that we can have a more inclusive dialogue and also greening of East Portland, which is very much lacking. My hope, and I think everyone's hope from this session, is to how do you best integrate and interconnect the critical assets of our cities together? As a civil engineer and also a transportation planner who sits on the Urban Forestry Commission advocating for trees.
Just do the whole thing.
Just kind of the whole thing, no. It's in a very unique situation, but as a professor of resiliency, how do you bring it all together? How do you integrate it? And ultimately, you know, with roads and utilities and streets, and also future development that's going to take place in the city. I think it's going to be very challenging, but I think it's, it's, it's doable, but how do you make the city, as we grow to 2040, to make it more workable, livable, and healthy for everyone? So, I have more talking points, but I think I want to rest there, unless there are some discussions as to what it is that we could bring forward to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any question for our folks from the Urban Forestry Commission?
What other panels do we have?
This is it.
This is it, Commissioner, and then we're going to open it up just for conversation and questions that you might have.
Yeah, well, I, I was paying close attention, Jim, to your testimony about expectations and next steps. Because if we are to launch this task force, there's an initial question of managing expectations. There are some thorny legal issues and practical issues and funding issues to be resolved. And I view the task force concept as an opportunity to really focus some attention, some staff and community resources on really thinking it through, looking at best practices, looking at other cities and the like. I think, while I, I heard you about some of the process questions at the back end, you know, for me, the more I listened to this presentation, the task force for me is a chance to understand what the menu of options are and how feasible are they. And one of the complicating factors obviously has to do with the unique status of our utilities versus everyone else. And so, you know, it, it could very well be that the task force says, you know, we want homeowners, property owners to pay some kind of fee in lieu. If, if I had been told when I bought my house I could pay a fee in lieu, I would have hopefully jumped at it, because first thing that happened when I bought my house is the prized tree in front of the house that was its great selling point fell on my house, and I got a bill from the city. And by the way, it seems to me, we could act now just to get a disclosure form on every sale of a home, that just has a form that puts people on notice that, that you are responsible for those trees, that you may very well want to have someone check the trees out to make sure that, you know, they're healthy, because that, that does become your responsibility. It seems to me that is a no-brainer. But I want to just focus for a second on the utilities. My sense is that we should probably think about having someone from the Portland Utility Board as either a task force member or ex officio, so that we have good communication between the two, because whatever comes out of this, the pub and the cub are going to want to review it carefully, and I think having them at the table. And I also think it's important that when you, when, if the task force does go forward, and once they get to some preliminary recommendations, I think it's very important that Karen Monahan from the City Attorney's Office come in and do a scrub, and provide some focused legal advice. Because as we've learned the hard way, there are some do's and don'ts. And I think, I think it's important to have the City Attorney's Office weigh in, provide some of the legal architecture for people to consider as they're sharpening any recommendations. So just, those are, those are my initial comments.
Well, I, I guess, I want to know how much it's going to cost, how many new employees it's going to require, and I don't think the task force as recommended of Urban Forestry Commission members and advocates is going to be critical enough, frankly. We need to have pub members, we need to have small business, what's the name of our organization? The small business organization?
Venture Portland.
Venture Portland. Yeah, we need a task force that truly represents a lot of different opinions to wrestle with this issue. And so, that's my first recommendation. It's got to be more broad-based than advocates and Urban Forestry Commission members. But secondly, I'm, I'm just struck that there's no ballpark estimates. I mean, there must be in that 2009 report, what's a ballpark estimate of how much it's going to cost the city to do it? How many new employees are we going to need to do that? Those are going to be things that ultimately going to affect, you know, my decision-making on this.
And that's what we would be asking the task force to help identify. Of course, since 2009, we've implemented Title XI, the tree codes, so there's a lot more complexity. The other thing I want to acknowledge is that the auditor recommended when she did the tree code audit, that we start with the Urban Forestry Management Plan. I support this approach of, of just starting with what should be a doable piece of the whole management plan, rather than waiting another two or three years to get the plan done. I think this will inform the plan. So I think your questions are certainly appropriate, and we need, that's part of what we would ask the task force to do. My understanding is we would not be hiring any new staff. The bureau staff would be able to fit into their work programs? Is that what you're thinking?
That's my understanding, saying, in terms of launching the, the option three, it sounds like it's 70K, and then we're getting a generous donation for the facilitation, which I think is, makes, is a pretty lean ask.
Yeah. So it would be the one-time cost for the consultant, then existing staff to help us find that.
And Commissioner, I might, I might just ask if we could bring up Chris Warner, too, because in, in terms of the, the structure of the task force, it is going to be Interbureau Commissioner, and would be broad-based, and, and some of the ideas about other people that should we, should add to the task force, we could definitely do that.
Well, we're talking about two, though, right? We're talking about a street tree, your, your project.
Yes.
And then the second one to address other issues about the maintenance of them.
But this, this.
By the way, thank you for the Urban Forestry Commissioners who are here today.
Yeah, but, you know, I guess, you can't dance around the fact that there's going to be some cost shift from private property owners to city taxpayers or to some ratepayer universe. And so, yeah, I, I need to get an idea of what, what that number is, and how many additional employees, I mean, I'm, I'd be tickled if you could do it with the existing employees, but somehow I don't believe that's the case.
Well, and that's maybe a good place to start, Commissioner Saltzman. We would be doing it now if we could, but we, we don't have the resources to do it. And I think you're absolutely astute in saying, in the end, this comes down to funding. And there are estimates in that Davey Report that I referenced from 2009. I'm reluctant to use them because they're from 2009, and honestly, I think we would do that report a little differently today. But ballpark, if you look at option two in your packet, and that cost range, like one and a half million a year to just improve on the current system, we could have something of that nature. But really, it depends on what that task force comes up with, because there are so many different options. It could be, for example, that only certain maintenance activities are taken on by the city, and others remain with the adjacent property owners. It could be that the cycle for how often trees are proactively maintained by the city is longer, and therefore it's less expensive. The Davey Report had a three-year cycle, which really is the Cadillac model. We don't, I don't know of any cities who maintain street trees that frequently, and that's why I'm really reluctant to use any of, of their figures. And I know that's really hard, because the first question I would ask is, how much is this going to cost? Do we even do this if it's going to be too expensive? So, that is difficult. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot to go off of. So the idea of the task force, they're really, their primary job would be working on options that would be reasonable for council to consider, in terms of what the costs and what the structure of the city taking over maintenance would be. And in regards to number of staff, too, that's something that, it depends on the city that you look at. Some contract that work out, others have staff that do the routine tree maintenance, and others have some combination thereof. So, that would be another thing for the task force to look at. And I think it was Jim Labby, who is just up here, who was talking about the workforce development opportunities that something like this could, could do. So that's something else that that task force specifically could look at.
Jen, this, but this goes back to my, my, my first question about the, the piece of maintaining the tree in the right of way, and then some of the other impacts of trees, the roots that impact the sidewalks and the like. If you do a back of the envelope, just guesstimate off of the numbers that PBOT just gave us of 1,000 to 1,500 permits in a year, and, and, and you do some blended rate between the premium that PBOT would charge and what a private contractor were, you know, that's, that's in and of itself millions of dollars, millions of dollars. And, and I, I would argue that whether we do the task force or not, we should be focusing on a more robust equity plan in terms of financing for low-income homeowners to pick up older adults in Chloe's neighborhood, to pick up folks in East Portland. Because, I mean, why would someone take a tree if they're taking on this unfunded liability, and they're looking at the potential that somewhere down the road they're going to have to pay, you know, thousands of dollars? I will tell you that when I got my bill, it was a shock to the system, because I, you know, I'm probably typical of a lot of middle-class families, I didn't budget for the tree issue. So that was an unexpected cost that we had to scramble on. So, you know, I think bifurcating this and looking strictly speaking at, you know, maintaining the trees in the right of way as one issue, but also looking separately at, you know, how do we, from an equity lens point of view, encourage, how do we get more trees in the, in places in East Portland where our urban canopy is lacking? And what, if any, pro- And what, if any, programs need to be adjusted around discounts and other things, because I, my guess is...
Okay. It's on the web. Rest... Just off Siri, though. That's how it's had to fix the whole thing.
I'm tired of this back talk. Keep your opinions to yourself.
That's a good point, Commissioner. Commissioner Daley, I think you were waiting to say something.
Commissioner Fish, were you done?
Well, so I would, I would want, so let me just close by saying, number one, I'd like to see a proposed list of task force members. I think that's how we get at the issue Dan and I've raised, and I think the council should have an opportunity to weigh in with recommendations. I'm not going to be necessarily recommending, you know, a person, but I am going to be recommending that we select someone from the pub, and I think Venture Portland's a good idea, and just so that it's broadly representative. And second, I'd like to see the questions broken up into subsidiary questions, so that, for example, the task force may decide that sidewalks are too complicated, and certainly they get very complicated from the utility point of view in terms of nexus. And so there are other options in the short term, including beefing up our discount programs or our financing options for low-income households, which may, in the short term, get us some progress without taking on the bigger cost until we figure out how to... And I want to remind people, the mayor has signaled in his budget guidance at the last time we all got together that he's likely to be proposing that bureaus, general fund bureaus, look at some cuts in this upcoming budget. So the cost issue and how we pay for it is obviously very important.
Thank you, Commissioner. We did just start our parks budget process last night with our budget advisory committee process, so this is, I think you're really spot on in terms of, we need a fund right now to help adjacent property owners who can't find the funds to maintain or do the sidewalks across the trees. Commissioner Daley?
So, thank you for this report. It was very helpful. In support of the task force, my leaning is that the city does need to take on more responsibility for maintenance, and what are we talking about? Maintenance and, what was the other?
Sort of the design of the right-of-way, you know?
But at the very least, I think it's obvious we need to put more resources into outreach and public education, and also finding money to help low-income adjacent property owners with the costs of maintaining tree and/or sidewalk. I think it's really smart to look at trees as part of our essential infrastructure, and it's really helpful to quantify them in terms of the value of the service or benefit the trees give, the replacement value. I think the public will welcome this conversation, although no one will want to pay for it, kind of like our potholes. But, I mean, somebody's, it's not working very well now, so I'm particularly interested in looking at what the long-term cost of neglect of our trees is. There's injury and potentially death, there's property damage, power outages, traffic disruptions, staff time, the loss of the benefit of the tree, the loss and the replacement costs. And so, you know, while of course we have to figure out what this will cost us, let's figure out what it's already costing us not to take care of them.
And Commissioner, I should mention, where these two efforts intersect is a lot of work that's been done over the past couple of years to get the right tree in the right place.
Yes.
So we have, you know, Commissioner, I don't know what your trees were, maybe they were elms planted in areas that are very narrow, these are trees that need, you know, 10, 12 feet of room. We've also looked at other activities like root barriers that help protect sidewalks, and so that's where these things can intersect. Some of the things that we do today will bear fruit 10, 20, 30 years from now, where trees remain healthy over a long period of time, and they don't fail. But we unfortunately are in a position where many of the trees that were planted over the last 100 years, maybe they weren't, you know, the right, the right tree in the right place, so.
And I'm forgetting his name, but there's a local guy who is involved in, like, harvesting urban timber, and he's talked about, you know, really kind of tracking the natural lifespan of a tree and being proactive to the point where we might take a tree down toward the end of its lifetime, even if it's not failing. I don't know if that's the right word for it. And make use of that resource. And, I mean, this is a small-scale thing, but it's just an interesting, very interesting proposition to me, that we don't just let the trees fail, we're actively managing them throughout their lifespan and making the most, at the end, perhaps Portland souvenirs carved from...
So I just wanted to add, one of the questions was about the usability of the toolkit. Actually, we've changed its name to Streets 2035, and the right-of-way allocation is going to be the first work effort, and then complete streets, or compete streets, as Chris likes to call it, for the second phase. So it will be a multi-year effort, but we are looking to make sure that we have policies, once we've agreed to solutions to the issues that exist today, to have those policies come forth before council for adoption. So one of the slides that we had with the timeline had a bunch of spin-off arrows, and that was to imply that we are looking to make sure that this is a very usable document. Space is very constrained in the right-of-way, and there are a lot of competing needs. And so, one of the first policies that, you know, we could consider is, how much right-of-way do we want to exact from developers? We do look at each development detail by detail, kind of like that underground slide, and that's how we get to what the requirements are. But I think we need a bigger-picture policy, so we're not doing it piecemeal. So again, that's our intent, is to make this a very usable document as we tackle problems and come up with solutions. It will be very intense community engagement with people asking questions about, you know, what about this tree root barrier versus this water line? I think we're going to ask our consultants to help to make sure that those conversations are facilitated, and that we have some outcomes. I don't expect we're going to delve into the details, but we're going to ask that the details get presented in a fashion that we can use and make decisions. I think the other thing was, just to reiterate the need for this, we do balance all the competing needs of the right-of-way, and I think we're doing a pretty good job. You know, those 57,000 trees that Jen quoted that have been installed since, what did you say, 2012 or 2011? Many of those have been through our development permit review scenario, and so we believe in PBO that trees are a valuable asset and a piece of the puzzle to make the city great, and we're going to continue to do that. But there are things that are also made in the right-of-way, the underground vault. And so, now how do we make those trade-offs, the big-picture decisions, and those will be the policy decisions that we want to come back to council, either through a work session or through different requests, through code changes or administrative rules in the future?
In terms of the underground vaults, I think one of the things that we've had competing interests is sometimes on the bigger buildings, they like to put them on the first floor, but we like that space to be activated. And so what, then what that's done is drawn them down into underground vaults, and so then that, you know, that's great for the first floor of the building, but then that just puts more competition on the right-of-way. So those are the kind of things we have to balance every day, and so what we're trying to do is come up with a process to make it easier, make it more predictable.
And something I'll mention, too, in relation to the PBO project, is I feel like PBO has, Bureau of Transportation has made a real effort to stress that trees will be considered along with and at the same level as all of the other essential infrastructure that we need in right-of-way. And Christine, of course, is correct, we deal with this every day in all of our permit cases, whether it's a Bureau of Transportation street development project or an adjacent property development project, they're a trade-off, and that's where it gets tough. So we're really hoping that the project will give us good guidance and process and some real definition around how decisions are made and what gives when there's too much competition for space of right-of-way. And obviously, in my role as a city forester, and also speaking, I'm sure on behalf of the Forestry Commission and other tree advocates in town, having trees be at least on par with the rest of that infrastructure is super important, and we're glad to know that that's the way that process will go.
I'm really interested in the conversation about new development and requirements for those developers to, I mean, I don't know if this is the intent, but my interest is offsetting the impact of their development, the environmental impact. And so we're looking at a new eco-roof policy, and I wonder how that might impact thinking around that issue, like if they do need these old underground vaults, and there's other barriers to planting trees on the street, can they put more green on their roof? This is a thought.
I think, as we get more and more dense, we're going to be, we're going to need to be more and more creative about how we create open space. So typically, we thought of it as a park, and then we thought of it as a right-of-way area. And I think kind of progressive thinkers are realizing that, well, as we go, as we go vertical, what does this mean? Can we get public space on the second floor, on the third floor? Can that be somehow connected and accessible to everyone? And we have, we've had some presentations from some interesting people around the country who are thinking through that, so that we don't just limit ourselves to that 60 feet or that adjacent public space. So I think there's some good opportunities for creativity in the future.
Mike, as part of this task force, the scope of their work, will they have the staff capacity to do a scan of how other cities have approached this? Because it's a skinny budget, and we're asking them to do a lot. I want to make sure they have the resources to be able to give us a, an appendix which lists other cities...
Right.
...a different approaches, funding mechanisms, outcomes, things of that nature.
Commissioner, that's a key part, not just what they do, but how do they, how do they fund it? And as Jen went down that list, there are different funding mechanisms, and we'd like to present those options as well.
Right. And Commissioner Fish, the idea is also that they, not only the residents on that task force, but that consultant with the expertise, that would be a prime job of theirs, is to go and collect those data and bring them back for us, how they're funded, how those programs are structured in other cities, how they would and maybe would not work for Portland, so that the task force could really consider all the options and come back to council with some very good competitive ideas for council to think about.
I just want to make sure that we're clear, that the task force is proposed to be for the maintenance options, and the work that PBO is going to be leading for the right-of-way management and allocation is going to be the system that we're going to be using for the prioritization and allocation of space for trees and everything else. So we can definitely have our consultant look at that, too, as far as best practices in other cities.
Yeah. Be good to do that at the same time as part of the same research effort, yeah.
If you guys do it, we'll use it.
Okay.
Interesting.
And vice versa.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this information so clearly. Thank you to the Forestry Commission, who came before us in the springtime and said, we need to do this, we'll come back and discuss. It's certainly worked out very nicely that PBO is already doing this process, and so we very much appreciate the collaboration. I appreciate, Commissioner Fish, you just talked about the skinny budget of the task force, which is 70,000, and before the City Budget Office weighs in to say, we should find it within existing resources. They say that a lot, and there's only a certain amount of existing resources, so I think the mechanism is for me to come back in the spring bump to ask for this $70,000 to be allocated. But you're right, it's cheap at the price, and that's partly because of the ongoing work of volunteers and committed community members. So I really believe that this is a lot of people coming together, both city staff and community members, that we're looking towards a solution to something that has been vexing for a very long time. And I also think that getting the street trees and the street scape figured out will help us with our, with the other things, like the update of Title 11, and also the Urban Forestry Management Plan. So lots of work to come, but I'm hearing from my colleagues that we are choosing the option three, or we recommend that you deliver that further.
And Commissioners, if any of you want to have, you know, follow-up conversations about this and other ideas that come to mind, please reach out, we'd be happy to do that.
Yes, indeed.
Thanks to everybody. Have a half hour back.
Your time. Thank you very much.[1737.32]